Local selection meeting. The county's Act of Maintenance, number seven, 2018. For orders, salute the flag.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, the Constitution, the Constitution of our nation, under our oath of independence, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. I approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
On second half. We'll be second in all favor. Minutes for the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of October 26th, October 30th, and November 1st.
We can second it to approve October 46th, October 30th, and November 1st. Any agenda? All good, on favor? All votes. Okay, the department heads and committee chairs, district real commission, temporary real commission, interim real commission.
Good evening. A few minutes here, I have quite a little whistle. I'll start with my own business. I meant to let you know last Saturday. Newbridge Road, the trees that we take down, we're going to make sure that they stay as they're going to go on. It was, uh, one, two, three, I don't know, like tree trees, um, three that we talked about, building more, that's gonna get the years by the cars, the summer, then the hollow, it's a hazard, it's gonna take those off. So same now, we're gonna have four, five stumps, we got the grime, and some of the cement, and so on and so on. And that's where, that's where we're at for that. I spoke with today, um, and, um, like everybody else, we're just ranking that in some lines, so we make sure we call them next week, we'll be along next week, we'll get that there, and make those taken care of. So take care of that there. The signs will pinch, I put that back up last week, I can get them, so that's all taken care of, um, that there. And then tomorrow, I was slated to go to the hop road, do those two crossditches, do those shingles, I supposed to do that part careful, we're gonna come there, so I'll just put the, uh, hub on the comp, park the path, right down, where we put the conings, wherever it is, and, um, take care of those, and then we'll go to Newbridge Road, fix a few bad spots that need to let alone just hold back, so we're gonna be that taken care of tomorrow. Jump back to, uh, the Mount Mills Road, I noticed, uh, two Saturdays ago, when we were out treating roads, it was, the water was real high, uh, so then I noticed the other day, it's gone down. Tuesday, I had Robert hand go off, check it for me, uh, the Beaver Dam that was there on the high side, the end of the side of that bridge, uh, breached itself, so that's why the water's gone down. It's a state road, I'm assuming it'd be a state bridge, the state does have a plane shuttle truck, that they come along, they clean the manhole itself, I don't know, you know, maybe we should reach out to them.
Which one are you talking about? Is that like the first bit of that long ride?
Yes, yeah, just a few bits down off.
Cause they were in there, but they have to go.
Okay. Okay, well, maybe it was then that did it, cause I noticed that we could see the water line on the trees that had drawn and everything, um, so, um, so I did a research, I reached out to the Smash, knowing that that water goes to Moon Pond, and then goes out across there, blocking it, um, wondering, you know, construction somewhere or something like that. So, but hopefully that'll, that'll take care of it. Robin did take some pictures of it for me, so I got some pictures, you know, we did, but if they did breach, sort of, the water is going down, and so, um, so that takes, takes care of that. My mom's subject of a state, uh, this past Saturday night, we had a large tree that cleaned down on Fox's Bridge, um, ended up tying up the fire department, one piece apparatus, well, you know, one piece apparatus, couple guys here there till about midnight, um, so my question is, seeing this is a state road in summertime, does the state take care of debris from trees down, or does that follow? I mean, I had Robin go out, uh, Sunday for a couple hours after C and P got done, um, the C and P just cut the tree up, left the stuff on the side over, the road has it, so he went out and piled up, made the side of the road safe and everything. So I don't know what the language is when it comes to, you know, do we call the state, has the state take care of this, or, or does it come out of, you know, tree num- numbers, or does it just matter some, I don't know, that's, somebody's got guys on what we do with that.
They come out like clockwork.
Yeah, that's, well, I was always under the assumption, we just do work with the maintenance and everything else, following the state.
I don't know about that.
But we, we, you know, I, I had Robin go for a couple hours, and he took care of the problem, so we don't have a hazard, so that, that eliminates us, uh, as a town, the liability that, but there's still a mess on the side of the road.
You did a good job, Melvin.
Yeah, so, um, on that there, so, uh, that pretty much takes care of the old business, um, so now we're gonna move on to some new business. The, uh, so took care of the tree on that there, and put it clean up that there. When I was down on the hop road Saturday morning, to do some measurements for those crossditches, um, and I was with, I had some concern about some trees, we had three trees that are, that are down there, totally, um, right on the side of the road, they're large trees, um, it isn't, uh, if they're gonna come down, that's when they're gonna come down. Abandon the winds, if they come out, out of the west, they're gonna go right across the hop road, and then take the wires down, and then go back to the inconvenience of the, the people in Opalo, with tying up fire apparatus, um, I'm asking for another $1,200, you have to heal and handle, remove these trees, grind the stumps, so there'll be another eight, there's a couple that need to be ground, they're right on the shoulder, um, and take care of that. So like I said, it isn't, it isn't if they're gonna come down, it's when they're gonna come down. And water won't approximately be tall, so, um, you know, so, um, I'm asking, I'm asking for that, um, and they're, you know, said that they deal, you know, a day's work, they'll clean up everything, they care logs, so we don't have a mess to, to deal with, so, um...
I'm assuming that's on the town side of hop road?
On, on hop road, yeah, I mean, there's, there's one that's a judgment call, I mean, we're off by a couple feet, you know, and why I could tell if it's a 15 foot ride or like, down from there, so, I mean, we'll come, if it's 50, we pace it out, um, like I said, it's a hazard, so, I mean, that's, that's what I'm wondering, um, do we let it go, and then the inconvenience, and then on the other end, the budget numbers, and then it comes out of the fire department, because we're paying our guys to get out there to babysit trees, and we had, had an issue with them, so, um, it'd be very well, money very well spent, and, and everything, so, I, I don't know, uh, we do not have a line item budget, which, we know we've had this conversation, and if anything out of all this comes out, the road works, we need the line item budget.
Is that something you can say?
Yes, exactly, exactly, that's, you know, I don't know, I should be able to say, yes, I've got x amount of money on the full hit tree, tree account, this is where, this work's ready to go, and, uh, we'll be able to pursue that, uh, as right now, that's, that's what we're gonna make that decision, you know, how, um, you know, get the funds taken care of, so, um, so that, that, that there. I'm gonna, uh, new business again, I'm gonna jump back over to, uh, Newbridge, that road was slated to have work done, um, to be done on, there was a bunch of trees that was supposed to be taken care of, hasn't been done, um, ball kind of dropped and all that stuff, um, again, those, I don't know, well, back, if, I think there was a few people to pursue this, the reason being is that maybe still be tree work year round, um, I don't know, what I could do is walk the road, go to Attic Hill, and say, well, we, we will hold it for that, it's gonna take four days to get these trees down, before it's still gonna pursue and fix this road, I, I'm gonna paint on the spring, um, let's see if that tree work, you know, done, so come springtime, I'm not trying to do other brings, you know, uh, and then be another, you know, piece of fire to take care of, uh, but again, that's your judgment call, there's also, we have the money, where the money's gonna come from, and, um, we go from there, uh, is one, one of those things. The other thing was, is, um, brought to my attention through, through AWAR, um, there is possible grant money, to take and fix that pulvert that's over there, um, and we have a lot of work, there's a lot of phone calls that need to be done, um, I'm a big believer on the road committee, these people do a wonderful job, they're a advisory committee, but I do not have the time, it's if they call the state, make phone calls, do whatever, that's what these people are here for, they're willing to do this. I was over there, when we were over there with that pulvert, um, there was fish jumping in that stream, so inland fisheries wildlife stocks, more Wilson Lake, and Long Pond, so they get an interest in this. We know that they're spawning the trout that are in that draw, so we have an interest in that, and we also have a large moon population over there, and, and then we also know that we have runoff coming from the north end of Newbridge and the Long Pond, it was needed to be addressed, we're having silt, and fines, and everything else in there, um, it's possible, if we jump on this, and start asking, you know, make some phone calls, that we could probably get a hundred percent grant, if we let public, build that road up, and take care of the issues that are done, because there's three or four departments at the state level that have interest in this, um, but it's something that we, we just can't with, there's deadlines on grants, um, so what I'm asking for your blessing, is to be able to let them make some phone calls, let's get some information, let's find out if we are eligible for these grants, what's the deadline, when's this paperwork need to be in, and, uh, and see what we can do. We may be able to get a half mile of that road paid, paid for under, under a grant from the state through these other departments, and that's to replace that pulvert, that's a, a 42 inch ID pulvert, it's a large pulvert, a lot, a lot of those through there, that isn't the correct application to have a, a, a pulvert in there. The state may wanna do, if we get them on board, they may wanna do what they did up to Ball Slade on the, at the Newville Line, put a sandbox pulvert in, that was, I believe, a full 100% grant, uh, they had, uh, sharp brothers out of Guam did the work, they had represented some DEP inland fisheries, they took care of everything, and, uh, so, like I said, the opportunity's there, but I don't have the time, I'm sure other people on the board and gentlemen's got plenty to do, so if, uh, if I can get some people on board from the road committee, to give us some information, and find out where we can go with this, it isn't gonna hurt, so, um, but that's, again, that's up to the board to see what they're doing, so, you know. When it comes, comes to numbers, or who's not, uh, if any, you know, if the paperwork's out there in the, in the, in emails saying, hey, we, we have money out here, you know, that, I think we need to pursue, but let's see what's gonna pay us, you know, we, they may say great, or they may say, or it may be a 75, 25 match, who knows, that happened a lot, it may be a 50, 50 match, but, uh, something's better than that, and not, and not pass it out.
We never ask, you know.
Exactly, exactly, um, so, um, that's, that's my, my input on that there, um, and the last thing, but that's...
Hold it on that one for a second.
Yep.
What's the best way to approach that, and perhaps you send them any, any emails to the group committee?
Or they can take everything, contact the chair, and let them know that the board gave them authority, or gave you authority to have them speak to me after, or maybe making requests, I don't have any other...
I mean, I don't...
What about the tree request, I didn't hear of over or anything on the tree work you had asked for?
We kind of bounced around on a couple of different tree, tree places, any?
So, so Newbridge Road, we've already proved that, we talked about that last week, that's all set to go, we have to go for anyone, and next week, we'll take care of things to be done, and do that there, the other tree on the hop road. I just, you know, if he was here in town, and I told him, I said, if you, you dispose, I want you here consecutive days, don't give me a day, leave and come back, and that seems to be a, a failure sometimes, is that these contractors come and go, and you kind of get involved with the crap, so, you know, so, um, it's, if you need a...
Is that something we can afford to do this, come here, or?
There's plenty of money in that budget.
Like I said, I do not know, we do not have a line item budget, or anything, and, uh, you know, to be respectful, I should be able to...
Oh, goes well, we will have, for next year, I've got some sample stuff to go by, that I grabbed from work, so, you know, it's, you know, it's a good reason on that, so, I think it makes perfectly good sense to do that. I mean, yeah, there's plenty of money in the account, I don't see any issues, why don't we get that done, whether the tree company's gonna be right around?
Yeah. I'm trying to get an estimate for the rest of the work for Troy Road this year.
Yeah, that was, the other thing, why you say it, looks like most of the trees are already knocked, and we've noticed a few more, uh, well, it's the tree work they can do year round, so, I mean, um, like I said, if we give things go, we're not pulling the trigger, and if you're doing this, you know, right, this would be the first road we take care of in the spring, you don't wanna, you know, you know, because everybody's gonna be behind because of the weather, the baseball, so, if you know, that'd be just one other thing that you don't have to worry about, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think you go ahead.
You know, I'll give you some numbers of what, what it costs, and, and, uh, you know, timeframe, and, 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 he's all, he's all signed up, he's all set, so we just, we shut road down, and do what we need to do, and what the fire department know, and, and they can all hold the young bridge, and, and...
Yeah, it means you put it right out.
All right, my last, my last thing, uh, last Saturday, um, when we had a washout over there on the town farm road, and Sanborn Road, I had to go in there, the blue, uh, town garage, um, and, huh, the roof leaks, and it leaks beside the electrical panel, and which, you know, that, that's, I don't know, we...
I'm just throwing out.
No, no, not saying that, the old town, the old too big garage, that's where, that's where the signs are, and all that, the carnage and all that stuff, uh, that's been there, Dennis, how long did they build that, so, yeah, mid seventies or so, I don't think anybody's ever been up on that roof to look, to see what's going on, uh, the floor was like, it was dripping in there, dripping beside the electrical panel, which electrical panel ain't up to code, there's no GFIs on that, um, again, we do not have a CIP program, Capital Improvement Program, where we can deal with this, and that's, you know, that's another frustration, you know, but...
That's one of the other forms, that's what town work do, that I have to bring, bring in?
Checks and balances, and make things transparent, that, you know, and, and everything. That building right there, the size of that building, I, I just kind of googled it online, that building's running $60,000, just for the steel, to put that building up, so we need to put some money into it, and we need to make it, so it's, you know...
Roof repair aren't really relatively inexpensive.
Yep, yep.
So, you know, we have to steal roof, or I guess, yeah.
Yep.
Well, they should have put a panel over it.
So we need, uh, you know, see where we can, you know, come from that, so...
Had to be, right, I'm worried, yeah.
You know, it's, you know, it's, it just happened, it was raining, I had to go and hit cones and signs, and, and, you know, it's, I wanted to reach for the lights, so I should feel like I was standing in water, and it was dripping, so...
Didn't come in the doorway, yeah?
No, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's...
Do you know anybody that does metal roof repair? I mean, I know one company...
I think, I think it's a very, uh, hell of a construction, to build this, to steal building, so... I'd have to, I'd have to, I'd have to ask around for, you know, a few, a few local guys in here in the city, and, you know, and, you know, like I said, maybe a panel, maybe just leaking on, on the street, or, like I said, nobody's ever called me up there since the day they come down off, that's right, um, you know, and maybe worse than they think, they just be, you know, re-sailing a little bit, but, but I want to bring that to attention, a couple of few things, and...
Can you look into that, Jeff?
I'll look into that, see what we can do, see if we can find something for that there, on that. Um, earlier, just a little while ago, I had a phone call, um, me and Jennifer spoke, so I'm waiting, I ran down the flat, the brown road, look, see what's going on. That road needs to be graded, that, that, there's no crown to the road, there's a lot of material in there, I'm gonna get them this along afterwards, and find out how far, I went down to the last house, um, I'm not sure if that's how the language was, or how we presented it, at, at the town, what we're gonna do, but it definitely needs to be graded, and the money that was spent, we grabbed my stuff, and it's all pottled now, there's no crown to it, um, so, I mean, that's something that needs a lot graded, to be graded. The only one around that I know that's up and running, uh, would be Jeff Goodman from Chapel, uh, with the awesome idea, see what he can do for us, um, you know, and get an all ready, I can put a couple guys to help me out, somebody's gotta pick rocks, you know, you have a guy behind him with rock, picking rocks, and whatever, uh, but there's leaves all over it, gonna have to leave blow that out off before we can grade it, I mean, there's, there's a little bit to it, it does need to, we have the town has a lot of money invested in that road right now, it needs to be, uh, it's, it's that road right now, other than the width of it, and some culverts that, the travel, you know, better than a what, it's out of there, so, um, so let me get some, if you don't mind, we get some numbers, um, I'll get a phone, a current number from Jennifer, so she has it from her side of town, and, uh, I'll see what he can do for us, if not, then it's gonna be reaching out to, you know, Dayton, or FI Carroll, or something like that, uh, we can get that shaped up before the weather changes and the ground gets together, so... Yeah, I guess that's about it, if you guys have any questions or anything, you put me in this position for a reason, so...
Well, that's good, that's what we need, so, all right? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Dave. Any other department heads, committee chair?
How old are you, actress? Joyce Gashi, planning board chair. Going through things over the last few months, we realized that our department, or our board has not recorded in some, in some time, so, we would like to bring to your attention, in July, a subcommittee was formed, should resume update the planning board bylaws, last review being done in October 1996. The subcommittee dedicates were posted, no one to the public, over the course of three meetings, a consensus was reached, and the subcommittee presented the suggestions to the full board for more input. The board conferred with the working subcommittee, and voted unanimously to ratify the 2018 planning board bylaws as revised. Each of you has a copy of the outdated bylaws, as well as the 2018 revised bylaw in your poll. I can point out, the only big change is, if there's vacancy on the planning board, in the old bylaws, it said 60 days to replace, and I can guarantee that 60 days is way too long for the amount of work this board is doing, so we've cut it down to 30 days, knowing that actually you guys usually fill the division within 10 days, so we think it's, it's a good thing, but please review it. Board members met with Paul Schumacher, Southern Regional Development Commission, uh, representative or guidance, in reviewing and updating our bylaws, and how to approach reviewing and updating the town comprehensive plan, ensuring that no conflicts with zoning ordinance exist. Please note, this is not rewriting the comprehensive plan, the board is following dated directives clearly stated in the plan, in many instances, review dates are overdue by as much as 13 years, this is an ongoing project with no end. Also in your packet, you will see a copy of, a random copy of the comprehensive plan, just one page showing planning board responsibilities with dates on them, uh, that we should've been looking at and haven't been, and that is the, the plain copy here. Board members proposed, proposed for zoning ordinance amendments, which were passed by voters in the annual reading in June, town may not be in the on-60. Section 5, 14.1.1, additional dwelling units, ABUs, section 1.4.7, 1.4.7.2, non-conforming vacant lots, section 5.9, mineral exploration and mineral extraction in this case, section 5.19, timber harvesting in resource protected districts. The board also reviewed subdivision regulations and modified Article 3 definitions to come, uh, to correspond with the state criteria. We've also attached re-adclusion, an inventory of accomplished actions from fiscal year 2017-18 through fiscal year 2018-19 to date, a total of 27 actions we're taking. We want you to know, it takes a planning board between six weeks, which is three meetings, we meet twice a month, first and third Thursday of the month, but it takes anywhere between six weeks and four months plus to approve an application, public key or site visits, appropriate sign off by other agencies, state, DEP, fire departments, all the other things, all adds to the timeline. There are times when we can approve at the best practical location our conditional use application more quickly, that's really the exception, not the rule. That's what we've been doing in the last six months, and we would just like you to know where we are, and we would truly like perhaps to see you again, maybe three times, so you are where we stand at the planning board. Thank you for this information, it's nice to see you.
Any other department heads, committee chair, please? Okay, we're gonna move on to old business, generated business.
We have none of those things.
So ongoing, okay. ACL position?
Nothing new to report.
Town reports?
They're working on it.
13th street?
You tell me.
It's, I believe, we'll take a moment until we get an update from downstairs.
Yep. Flat Ground Road, special meeting.
So the treasurer put together a warrant, uh, um, put together a special town meeting, one article was for the 6995, to give to bills, which are now just about late this week, um, the other one is an article to see if we'll raise an appropriate x amount of dollars for the completion of Flat Ground Road, um, unfortunately, without a number, we can't really schedule a special town meeting, um, we had originally picked November 19th, but, um, I don't know, no pressure date, it's not about you, but, um, without a number in there, you can't sign a warrant, so unless you decide that you want to take it off, and not spend any more money on it, and file it the way it is, which I think is not the recommendation...
That was my, yeah, so I was just gonna ask Dave that, if we grade that road, like you were talking about earlier, what does that do for being able to file it and revisit that in this court?
Yeah, um, yes, grading the road will, will cause the deal to fall, I mean, that's, you know, it's a monster, it needs to be graded, it's, it's flat, it's pottled, and everything, um, also, um, what we're going to money is to finish that, you're gonna have to follow that up in the spring right now, um, I called around for a few various areas, or for the material if we need it, they either mostly out, or it's promised to other people, um, other than buying processed material from either Black Carroll or Pike, that's, you know, 10, 50, $11 a yard, and then you got trucking fee, it's a big expense, matter of, the, the, grade the road, they'll till spring, um, and...
But even in the spring, they can't spend money on another town.
Exactly, right, exactly.
So you have any idea what it would cost to grade it, so we can get this special town meeting scheduled?
Let me, all right, let me back up, are you, all three of you in favor of us to bring in a, somebody else, somebody else that's to grade?
Yeah, yeah, we know, yeah, we know.
Let me, let me, let me take the, Mr. Goodman, over to Chapel, and, uh, let me get a, a number from him, he may do it flat rate, he may do it by the hour, I'm not sure, I'll get hold of John Curran, and we'll, you know, we'll...
I had a cent to his number.
Yeah, what's that?
I had a cent to his number.
Okay, all right, and...
But does some of you grade and roll, or just grade, or how is that?
You tell me what you're hoping to spend, that's...
As little as possible, but to make it as high quality as we can.
Yep, and there's smooth material on it, and it doesn't come out of, out of wooden pep and step, it's crushed out, it's a step, um, just, it isn't a true road, it's just a, a dead end road, that needs, needs all of that.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be maintained for the people who live there, and stuff?
And it's gonna be much better than it has been over the years, so, um, you know, it's...
I mean, is it worth bringing a roller in to roll it after they get done grading?
Yeah, probably not, you know, I...
And knowing that road hasn't had really any...
Exactly.
Really had enough, will that help set it in?
Yep, yep, you know, and, uh, let me, uh...
I mean, that's a relatively inexpensive, that, that's a grade, isn't it expensive?
Yeah, and, and, so, okay, well, I'll, I'll get some numbers for her, but let's, let's not hold off on, on, uh...
Well, I agree.
All right, so...
Well, they can't sign a warrant, I don't have a number for the armory.
Someone even need a number by.
Yeah, soon as possible.
They don't need it yet until next Tuesday, so at this point, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna bump the special town meeting from the 19th to the 26th.
I see.
So if they can possibly sign it next week, because it's gonna be 14th, 10 days out, and I could legally post it for seven days, but order the pipe, so, we may be looking at December, but, you know, one of these bills is expensive, and the guy's waiting for his money, so...
Let me, let me go make a phone call, let me see if I can get hold of Mr. Goodman, and see, and, uh...
We know approximately how long the road is, right?
I drove down... I drove down, uh, I just talked to.
Just the spiders, they, uh, that, how far is that from the start to the end of spiders?
Maybe just a half mile.
Elektra, like, bar, it was a half mile coming to the last house, just before we went to the border.
Yeah, it's, it's right past of, uh, we, the, I'll show you a parking lot. Uh, Mrs. Snyder's property is a road that goes to the left after that house, and that's where, um, if things had been different, that's where the town would have had it planned out.
Right, the article was very clear that it went to the end of her property.
Right. To the end of her property.
Or end of her property, so.
Okay, so that's down to the border. She goes down.
It was right in the face of the, the, when the stone bridge is, it was, yeah, the stone bridge is going in.
So that's where it goes to, and there's a few things to kind of clarify here, just a little bit. Uh, they're logging down and, uh, they started logging logs out this week.
On that road?
On that road, and the last eight hundred feet, uh, there was nothing put on that road, and you get up there and there's holes now, especially, you're getting almost as bad, you could lose a Volkswagen and.
Yes, there is, there is.
And, and I, I appreciate, you know, what Dave is trying to do, but I don't know, there's no material there to grade. When they get up to where the road is, a lot worse, and.
This is past your house?
Yes, in the very beginning of the road, for some reason, they never put any gravel on it. And the other issue is at the driveways, and normally when people do roads, they feather it to people's driveways, and some of those are eight, ten, twelve inches coming out into the road now. Uh, it's a heck of a mess where it left. And I'm not talking about the people in the Flatground, or I'm talking about the taxpayers, and, uh, I, I appreciate what Dave is trying to do. Uh, he's gonna do the best he can do, I'm sure, uh, but this special town meeting thing, this dollar amount that you're talking about, uh, we did have a dollar amount constructed, and whether that ends up being the dollar amount or not, you could put that in a warrant article, and moving forward, it depends on, uh, what the new road commission decides, they wanna do, they think it's a road, but at least the money would be there, because anybody knows anything with these roads, especially that road, uh, there's no gravel under it at all. And in the springtime, you're gonna have one heck of a mess, um, you try to follow that, right?
So Scott had originally quoted you a nine thousand dollars for penitentiary.
Saying that, he quoted, you got a quote already for nine thousand dollars, and you put it in the article, in the warrant, that it doesn't seat that, and it doesn't even have to use it, so that's, that's like half the amount, and we'll take our grading money out of it.
Yeah.
And, and do what you gotta do, you know, a back portion of the wall.
Whether we.
What's gonna change, and, you know.
Right, whether, whether that nine is used to bring it up to what we were gonna bring it up to, or, or we use a portion of that money to finish the back portion where it's, you know, get something in there, so it's not gonna be a muck hole, and get something in the front of it, get it graded, get it rolled, whatever needs to be done, basically stabilize it for one time. So, you know, and then, yeah, we'll get it really hard for next year, and come up with another dollar amount to go in there and finish the whole project.
Is it true the quote that Scott gave, including material and grading?
I think so, it's supposed to be the finisher, you know, to get it up at the.
I would think, that would, I mean, I don't know what graders going for nowadays, but I would think some gravel and grain, that money should go, but I would think, but, I'm thinking out loud.
Yeah, I know you guys are on push on this and, and each and number, unless we use that nine, that nine thousand dollar number, and do that, and, you know, like I said, it'd be great to get this out of a local pit, or we need probably, I mean, probably another hundred yards, uh, from what I saw, the, you know, um, in the spot standards, it's talking about take care of that, or we'll see what, you know, we ain't gonna haul out of, out of Pike, so you're gonna have to haul out of F.R. Carroll's, and I don't know, Mr. Carroll understands the situation that we're in, you know, he, he made sure to put on trucking, he, he put some, put some trucks on the quadrants, the dead end road, he can't get a trailer down there, that'd be the most economical way to do it.
And you have to beg in the whole thread.
Yeah, that's, we're gonna waste time doing that.
But pay for quarter, not for, yeah, half a quarter of the world, yeah. We really can't do much of anything until they get them logging down.
Yeah, well, then that's just it. People have the right to, to do what they need to do, the hottest timber on their land.
Right.
But we're back to fixing a road, and all the taxpayers have to take care of this money when a logger in the land always putting money into their pocket. I don't know, I just feel that there should be a half meeting sometimes, and if you're gonna do that, there should be money put in, into a bonded fund or whatever, and if the damage done, then you extract that money out of an account, so it takes care of road, you know.
That's not part of the same logging that they were doing.
I don't know, Mr. Goodwin, any idea, Dennis?
Oh, they got the water.
You know, they, Dave, a person uses them on my condo, but they're, they're probably one of the, they're right up, right up the top, with Kiel and, and those guys, so, uh, you know, I can, you know, I'll reach out a lot, and I'll give Ryan a call and see, and, you know, see how long they plan on being in there, and.
See if you can give them any help on the, on the road, so that, if it doesn't turn it up.
This is where we're stopping to make complaints, you know, and he wants to do good, good paid work and everything, he, he may try, but bringing a couple of loads of gravel and, and it isn't hard to ask, so.
Yeah, I mean, in the meantime, I guess we could use that nine thousand dollar number, if we wanted to move forward with this.
And if, and, you know, at the end of it, if we don't use it all back, it gets put back in the summer maintenance, or we'll put it back.
Get a fund, and they already said.
Because that, just because we, well, if people vote on nine thousand dollars, then we need to use it all, I mean, um, you know.
That might not do it.
Exactly.
But obviously, we gotta get the road fixed to them, so, you know, we gotta do.
Yeah, I, I'd use that number, let's, probably still, let me, let me go out and make some phone calls.
Okay. Okay.
We can, um, Dennis, you gonna be around tomorrow? Alright, so when we're down there shimming those in the morning, those crossditches, we'll be done, or whatever, I'll come back, and, like I said, I'm not sure, um, what the idea, whether people were gonna turn around at the end, or, and, you know, so.
We're gonna make some calls right now, or?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna, we'll skip over the rest of that one, and then we'll come back to it before we give it back to you.
Give me a few minutes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we'll come back to, the, uh, it's gonna be quick, I'm working on that one. Uh, gee, ZDA members?
Six members that have come forward, shown interest, Ryan Gleason, Dennis Long the third, Brandon Sinical, Bob Anderson, and Mike DeMers. And you already have three members, so you need, um, what do I say, two more, and two regulars and two alternates. Two regulars and two alternates.
Twenty-four.
And Mike DeMers is the code enforcement office in Chapel, so I believe that would be a conflict, I sent it to you. He's a, Mike DeMers is the CEO of Chapel, so if Penn Hall works for him, that may be a conflict.
Yeah, yeah, I see that one as a conflict.
What's the ZDA?
So we go to appeals. So, Bob Anderson has been on that before, I'll put him as a regular.
So Ryan Gleason is a fairly new resident to town, uh, we posted it online, uh, he answered one of the ads, he's looking to get involved. Dennis Long the third, spoke to me, Brandon Sinical, um, both locals for a long time, Bobby Anderson served on it for a little while, and then, of course, we already have three on it, so you need your direction, and we'll create some quick instructions.
So we took Bob Anderson as a regular. Dennis Long the third is a regular, and then we need two, um, Sinical, please see. Has she been on?
She's never been on this committee now.
Okay, I think Gleason decided we don't have her.
No, but he's the first one that came forward and hands it to the.
Yeah, yeah.
So having, what do we want? Anderson and Long as regulars, and Sinical and Gleason as alternates?
I would say.
Have a look for next week.
Okay. New business, sandbit.
So as you know, you got two sand, uh, three sandbits, um, one of them, the questions that you had asked regarding Alan White, where that sand was coming from, I spoke to Scott Mooney, it is from Monarch Minerals, who he's dealt with many times, uh, and the only reason he would recommend Alan White over Peppins, because of the exact same price, because Peppin wants to do all the delivery within two, three day period, whereas Alan White is saying the, um, material they available here, right?
What's your business?
Make a motion to award this sandbit to Alan White.
For nine fifty, uh, nine. Wait a second. Move the second, move the sandbit to Alan White for a nine dollars fifty cent add, and if it's available, we're on, for the discussion. We're both on favor, both of us. You want this initial or anything, or?
I know the votes are nothing.
Okay, now we're at District Two.
Um, there's more information coming forward in regards to the people that applied for positions, so.
Okay.
Um, it's like to see if, either schedule another executive session, or more details to share with you, and it's instruction. So I really don't have anything new on that, unless you're ready to act.
Okay. What's your thoughts?
I'm sure this information will feel like we can, I think, this will need to know.
True. Okay, do you want to do another executive session on that?
Sure.
Okay. Could we do that, uh, what, next to the D before, or just go before hours of the meeting?
So remember, we have to open the meeting and go into it, so you can, you just wanna do it, the first thing on the agenda, the last thing on the agenda?
First thing on the agenda.
So executive section of thirteenth.
Yep.
Do you wanna see any of the candidates again?
I think we're gonna have to see two of them. Yeah, 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 just put it to the, I guess, the two pad, okay. Okay, Dave, do you have anything else to do for us on that, or?
Say that again?
Anything else to do for us on that, or, on, did you get ahold of anybody?
Uh, I just left him a voicemail, and as soon as I find something out, I'll.
Okay, okay. Uh, yeah, let's jump back up to old business and, um, right, I mean, do we wanna, do we wanna put that nine thousand dollars on that, and we can go forward with it, that, two minutes later, or do we wanna?
I feel a little more comfortable with a second quote. It's the situation we're in now.
Okay, sounds good, okay. Well, just wait for Dave to get back to us on, on something, and we'll look to hopefully schedule that next week. Okay, we're down to public comment. Move to the public, everything you wanna say. Yeah, one more announcements. Transfer Station is gonna be closed the twelfth, which is Monday. Town Hall and Library are both closed on the twenty-second and the twenty-third, which is Thanksgiving and the day after. Christmas tree lighting is November fourth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, let's not push it. Uh, Owl's luncheon is the twenty-seventh of November. That's all we have, Dave, do you have anything?
No.
Update from Chili House?
Oh, yes. It was a great turnout, we had twenty pots, uh, crock pots and contestants, there were twelve chowders and eight chilis, oh no, I have that backwards, twelve chili and eight chowder. Um, Jim Briscoe came in first place for his alligator chili, and Mary Lutner came in first place for her, um, did she, would she give us a special name for her chowder?
She did, but I don't remember.
No, I have it named, it just say delicious. Delicious chowder. Thank you for it, Ray, who, um, came up to support it.
Did we get, you tell us, no, the other?
Um, two quick things, I just wanted, 'cause I got a couple of looks in the audience, so, uh, when I, when we got to Goat Hill, or not Goat Hill, we're on the thirteenth street, and I said to the chairman, you tell me, it's because he knew what I meant, hopefully, that, um, they just came from speaking to Mr. Gannon and code enforcement, so I didn't sit in on that, so that you tell me was not a why it's marked to you, that was you tell me, because you just sat in on an update, so.
Yeah.
Just so we're clear, so those of you that are glaring at me, that was not a direct.
Do not glare.
Do not, that was not a direct thing to my supervisor, it was you tell me an update, you were there and I wasn't.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other piece is just the elections. Um, you know, we work extremely hard, and I know that that's our job, and I know, but we have a lot of volunteers that set forward, we had a very smooth day, um, short of, you know, seeing square at seven oh five, um, the day went very well, um, so we appreciate everybody that worked. Plan, plan about my guy?
No. That's okay, you can tell.
Yeah, you're not gonna wanna hear it, but, um, he wanted to vote at seven oh five, the polls, apparently Google had told him that the polls opened at seven, they don't open until eight, you know, and, and he changed that, so.
Anybody that goes on Google expects to have a time to show up or anything, don't believe them.
We're not, but nevertheless, um, it took a lot of good people and a lot of good volunteers and employees to make everything go for the day, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, we, uh, we actually did sit through Jim's training, uh, the, what, Monday night, yeah, this is a Tuesday, Monday night, uh, that she makes, that she has all the clerks and election people go through, and right on cue with everything that happened, and she's, and she does a training, you listen.
Yes, a lot of strict rules to be followed.
She's a, yeah, hot enough, the town of Acton, you know, the old Avenue, you know, it's, I think it was, everybody listens, well, so, but she did a really good, I mean, it was, it was amazing to hear, the knowledge that she has on elections, and how she projected it while her, all the people that were working, so.
It's almost thirteen hundred ballots?
That's amazing, that's, yeah.
That's, um, only a few shy of, uh, the two thousand sixteen election, so, a long way.
Double what we had for the last election.
Safe list are coming tomorrow to pick up our ballots and all of the things that go along with it, but, um, district, one of the ranked choice has to be counted, so.
And you, you mean that you said you're only off by one ballot, and you knew what?
Well, we weren't off, we were, what happens is when absentee ballots go out, you know, we can't control that, they send both ballots back, and when we, you know, we were processing absentees, and we knew the minute we opened it, that, you know, only one ballot came back, but, I mean, I, there's not much, have so much control, you know, on election day, you can force them to put them in the machine, but if they send one back on election day, then, that was the one.
But thirteen, you know, thirteen hundred ballots, and that's the only glitch you had, it was like that, it's amazing.
Yeah.
So that's because you had work at it, huh? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna adjourn.
Move the second to all favor, all for it.